We're going to call the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting to order February 1st, 2022, and we're going to start with a moment of silence. And at this time, I would like to introduce the North Brunswick High School JRO2C under the leadership of Cadet Captain Mahorquez.
Trail colors. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Hogard, hope. Order, colors. Love, face. Every, colors. Recap, colors. Aye.
As we reach the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. Order, colors. Right, face. Trail, colors. Forward, march.
Thank you, may be seated. Board members, you have in front of you tonight the regular meeting agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lyman. Any discussion? All of you say aye?
Aye.
And quickly, I failed to recognize that Mr. Benton's going to join us by phone in just a little bit. He had a prayer commitment tonight. Public address first up, we have Lou Hamadi.
This thing working? Working? Okay. I, Nebuchadnezzar, was happy, was at home in my palace, content, prosperous, and I had this terrible dream. These were the visions I saw. I saw a tree, I saw a great tree that was center of the world. Its leaves were beautiful, its fruits abundant. In the vision, I saw a holy sentinel, and he cried out, cut down the tree. But the leaves, but the leaves on the, but leave, leave, excuse me, but leave in the, I don't know, leave in the earth is stump and roots. Let him be bathed with the dew of heaven. His lot be to eat among the beasts, the grass of the earth. Let his mind be changed from the human. Let him give a sense of a beast till seven years pass over. Then all who may know that the Most High rules over the kingdom of all men, he gives it to them who will, he gives it to them who he will, or sets it over the whole, or gives it to the loveliest men. Twelve months later, the king set Babylon the Great. Was it not I who built this city? And then that moment, the king heard that your kingdom is going to be taken away from you. You will be casted out among men. You shall dwell in the wild, we shall dwell as a wild beast. You shall be given grass to eat, and seven years that shall pass until you will receive your rule again. When this period was over, I, Nebuchadnezzar, raised my eyes to the heaven. My reason was restored to me, and I blessed, and I blessed the Most High. I praised and glorified him who lives forever and ever. Okay? And at this point, I just want to read a short prayer for the board. Heavenly Father, I pray over your children, I pray over the Board of Education, that wisdom and courage be imparted to their soul, that they can make wise decisions based on your direction and providence. So basically, that's it. The only other thing that I want to add to it is I was a little nervous tonight, so you know, you'll have to give me, excuse me on that. But some people ask me who I am, okay? And some, actually, people say, are you a lawyer? Are you a preacher? And I said, no, I'm not none of those. I am one crying in the wilderness making straight the path for freedom, knowledge, and God's wisdom. That's basically it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, sir.
And next up, we have Jen Hall.
Good evening. Who is more important, teachers or students? I first want to say to teachers, you are underpaid. Make face-to-face contact with North Carolina Board of Education and voice your concerns. Record it, post it on social media. They have too many administrators making big salaries and too many mandatory training sessions for teachers. Why are they telling qualified teachers how to teach? Second, board members, students must be your first concern. They need to be in the classroom learning. Many students fell behind because they could not do distant learning. But last month, you okayed extra time off for students and gave that time to teachers. Why not have the teachers do online training and keep the students in school? Now I am going to say something that is going to make everybody here mad. Some schools in North Carolina have a year-round school system. Can we try this? Can we try something to get the students caught up because they have lost so much time in the classroom? Let's make students first. Last year, you recognized students from an art contest. This was great. I would love to see students acknowledged for citizenship awards. The Daughters of the American Revolution has contests, and I'm sure other organizations do too. Let's see these students at board meetings. Student awards before teacher and staff awards. Brunswick County Board, you have a hard job, made even harder by the CDC and the DPI, but you need to step out of the box to make our children better, better at reading, better at math, better at writing. The country is changing. Parents are becoming involved in their children's education. They are demanding change. Let's start by changing one word. In Virginia, they are changing the word equity to opportunity. Teach our students in Brunswick County schools. They have the opportunity to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next up, we have Marilyn Pretty.
Hi. Thank you for listening tonight. I'm going to put on three different hats. And the first hat is my mom hat. Since we had this cold snap, I've been going through big boxes of school papers, you know, report cards and honor roll certificates and drawings with stickers on them. And I just want to thank the teachers. My kids didn't go to Brunswick County schools, but I know for sure that the teachers here are doing such an excellent job as the teachers that my children had the fortune to have as classroom teachers. And so, as a mom, I'm just asking you to keep that mask mandate in place to protect the students and the teachers and the staff. And I'm going to switch to my hard hat, because I wore a hard hat for, off and on for 30 years as an industrial hygienist and a safety professional. And I worked on a lot of different, with a lot of different companies in construction and industry and even schools to help put respirator programs in place. I did audits of those programs. But we always, always, always advised the employers. It was just an interim measure. It's just a stopgap measure, because I don't think there's anybody in the room that would argue with me that masks are no fun to wear. They're just no fun to wear. But sometimes, they're necessary. They can save lives. And that's what the public health officials are saying right now. And I think I'd just like you to continue that mandate. We're in a pandemic, and it's still claiming lives and clogging the emergency rooms and causing students and teachers to miss school. And masks will limit the spread of the virus. So, and finally, I'm just putting on a hat as simply as a resident of the county and as a voter. I vote every election for school board members. I vote for every bond issue that comes up in favor of the bond issues. And so even those of us that don't have children in the schools right now or grandchildren, we have neighbors and friends who do, and we have neighbors with toddlers and infants in their houses that can't be protected by a vaccine. So your decisions have an impact on all of those people and ourselves too. My husband has been on anti-reduction drugs following a kidney transplant for 11 years. And so he's severely immune compromised. So we don't go anywhere. I mean, I had to think twice about coming out here tonight. I go to the grocery and some medical appointments, and obviously, I haven't gone to the hair salon, but I had to skip my baby sister's funeral. And our 50th wedding anniversary is next month, and we probably will just stay home for the day. As a resident, I just wanted to keep the mandate in place.
Thank you, Marilyn. Next up, Judith Patterson.
Good evening. Just as an introduction, I'm Dr. Judith Patterson. I am a psychologist, and I also have a master's in nursing. I trust that we are all concerned with the welfare of our children. That is why we can never mandate an experimental genetic vaccine for our children. Children do not carry a heavy viral load. They do not transmit the virus, and for the most part, do not become more than minimally ill. The benefits of giving children these genetic vaccines are far outweighed by the tremendous risks. Adverse events are clear and compelling. In the short term, we are seeing massive reports of sudden death in athletes, primarily from myocarditis. Large numbers of pediatric deaths have also been reported in the, at the VAERS database. The long-term effects are yet to be seen, but we have medical experts warning of potential neurological, reproductive, and immune system damage. That is damage to the heart and blood vessels, to blood clotting mechanisms, and to procreation. During last week's Senate hearings, we heard that we have data showing over 300% increase in miscarriages, 300% increase in cancer, and over 1,000% increase in neurological issues. We cannot use our children as pawns in an unlawful experiment. If I were in your position as school board members, I would be very cautious about pushing an unconstitutional and unlawful mandate, one that violates the U.S. Constitution, as well as the Nuremberg Code and the Helsinki Accords. I also want to speak against masking our children in schools. Experiments have shown that masks are minimally, if at all, effective. They have the potential of harming our children. It has been warned that bacteria can gather in the mask and consequently be inhaled. There are also negative effects on our children's development. Experts are seeing speech delays and a drop of up to 20 points in IQ scores since inception of masks and social distancing. Children must be able to see facial expressions in order to develop social learning skills and language. Medical decisions must be made by parents, not school boards. Once we give up the right to make our own medical decisions for ourselves and for our children, other freedoms are soon also lost. Shouldn't that concern us all? Gandhi is credited as saying, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." How will we be remembered? Thank you.
Next up, Gary Ospey.
Good evening. I'm going to start with a quote from the New York Times. It was actually presented on the Morning, or the Morning Joe Show on MSNBC. Quote, "We've been telling supporters of Donald Trump to follow the science for two years. It's time we follow the science. It's time everybody follows the science, even when it means take off the masks," unquote. So what are the scientific facts? Last month, I shared with you a summary of why masks don't work and why they're dangerous to your health. Your students have a 99.99% chance of surviving COVID. Nations around the world are dropping all COVID mandates. We are seeing this play out in a dramatic fashion in Canada with the truckers' freedom efforts. The most meaningful part of that has been the recordings of the children telling their truckers how grateful they are for fighting for their freedoms as they want to go back to school and to participate in sports. Tomorrow, you may have a decision to make regarding using an experimental drug to vaccinate your students. You may think your decision is easy to make. We'll just do what we're told. And that would be your defense if something happens to a child. To put that into perspective, I'd like to recommend that you watch a movie. It's called A Few Good Men. It was starring Tom Cruise and Jack Nicholson. Pay particular attention to the last few minutes to see how well that, quote, "We are only doing what we are told," unquote, holds up in a court of law. You can also review how well that defense worked during the Nuremberg Trials. With the Nuremberg 2.0 Trials starting right now, that could be very important information to note. Now, that's all about the personal impact on your decisions. But the real question is, is what should be the number one priority when you make a decision? I believe that's the right decision, I believe that question is, what's the right decision for the children? And I know we don't have time tonight for everybody to speak to you. That's not the system that we have. So just out of curiosity, tonight, how many of you people here think tonight, when they make a decision, their first question ought to be, what's right for the kids? Can I see a show of hands? Okay, so a few people like the kids and a few people don't. Okay, that's cool. The fact is, your decisions have consequences, and we are going to hold you personally responsible for the health and well-being of your students. And make sure that you follow the science when making the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next up, we have board salutes, Dr. Oats.
Thanks for Mr. Siemens' release.
Okay, Mr. Siemens, welcome.
We're gonna have a little group discussion. Today, something special happened. So today, something very special happened. A little background first for those who are not aware about, just over a week ago, we had a terrifying situation at North Brunswick High School. In one of our exceptional children's classrooms, they were eating lunch, and one of the students started choking on his food. And terrifying to say the least for everybody inside that room. And luckily, a teacher assistant, without even thinking, immediately sprung in, and his actions led to that child being okay, like the best possible scenario. As terrifying as it was, the child was even smiling and good to go and ready to eat some more after it was over. But today, we, as we're looking at one of the pictures, we presented with Chairman Barger, the first ever Chairman's Award. To Blake Hobbs for his efforts and what he did, and the selfless act that he did. And we had the parents out there. Here's the award, Blake Hobbs, Chairman's Award in honor of extraordinary and selfless service to others. There is the family. You've got on the right, Ms. McCain. After this presentation was over, we were talking, we had the media out there and our local news, and I'm sitting there listening to her talk to the reporter, and there were some moving comments made. She said, of her child right there, she said she's always living in fear that when she's not with him, something could happen. There could be a moment, and out of her control. And she, you know, I think that's something every parent can relate to, but when you have a child as fragile as this young man, you know, it takes a lot of trust. And she said after, you know, after she was talking about this, she got to it, and she said she's always feared that moment happening. And then all of a sudden, that moment happened. It happened last week. And because of the turnout, because of how staff responded, because of everything, she has more trust. And that's what we love to hear. We love to see. We want people, they trust us with their children every day. And this is just a prime example. But anyway, Dr. Oats, you want to elaborate more on this award?
Yes, this award was established, as you said, Mr. Siemens, to award any of our employees who demonstrate selfless service to others. In this case, of course, a life was, a child's life was saved. And in my opinion, it gets no higher than that when a child is in distress and one of our employees just steps in and does what naturally came to him to do. This was, I think the mom posted this on Facebook.
I just pulled it up. Yeah, I was going to put a little bit about it, yeah.
It was talked about on Facebook, and we caught wind of it. I never had met Mr. Hobbs, but everything, until today. But from what I have been told about him, he's a very humble and unassuming gentleman. And this is according to his coworkers in the classroom. This is just who he is every day. Doesn't want to have any announcements made about him. Dr. Sullivan told me that because we surprised him with this, had he known, he might have taken the day off, not to even be awarded this Chairman's Award. I think there was some communication that Mr. Robinson had that spoke to this as well with Mr. Hobbs.
Yeah, I've known Mr. Hobbs quite some time, actually since high school. And we had some communications about this. I've been a paramedic for quite some time, for 32 years in EMS. And, you know, I don't typically think much about, you know, medical cases afterwards, you know, I do, but not to the degree Mr. Hobbs had to think about this after he did what he did. But he sent me an email, and I thought it was very impactful to read this. It says, "Hello, David. Dr. Sullivan came by my classroom and told me the school board wanted to recognize me at the next board meeting. I promise you, it's really no need. Just doing my job. I will say this, it's the scariest I've ever been. I've never seen a purple, lifeless child before, and I hope I never have to again. I really thought he had already died, and while everyone was in a panic, I stayed calm and tried my best. But on the inside, I was not calm. After I revived him and EMS arrived, I went to the classroom and had about 30 minutes to cry and get myself back together. I'm just thankful I got to send the little boy home alive." A high medical needs classroom is a totally different ballgame. I find myself being a nurse, cook, caretaker, diaper changer, and if I have the time, try and teach. But it's a very rewarding job that I love very much. I thought that was quite an impactful email, to say the very least. That's just an example of the type individual he is.
Absolutely. I think what drew our attention to this was a social media post that Dr. Oats referenced, and Mr. Robinson and I had talked about it, and the mother's words were, he saved her son's life that day. And I think that's, for all of us that are parents, that's powerful. So I'm glad Mr. Hobbs was able to get the inaugural award.
Yes. And that is Matthias right there. That is today. I can tell y'all, he was as happy as could be to be interviewed by the media. He is all happiness. He is a bundle of happiness, and it was good to see him in that spirit again today.
Thank you, David. And also, thank you to Mr. Hobbs, since he couldn't be here tonight. All right, next up, we have presentations. And the first one is going to be You Can Vote, Mia Bach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. My name is Mia Bach, and I'm the Regional Director for the Southeast based in Wilmington, which is Brunswick County. I'm excited to grow our services in the region in 2022. We provide training and education services for volunteers and community members here since 2018, including registering students at North Brunswick and West Brunswick High School, at the Shalope Farmers Market, and during numerous events in Oak Island and Sunset Beach. I'd like to introduce our Executive Director, who has vast experience preparing young citizens to become voters, and will share details of the high school program that we can offer at You Can Vote.
Early college as well?
Yes.
Early voters there too?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Kate Feldman. I am the founder and Executive Director of You Can Vote, and I'm also a parent to two North Carolina public school children. So I, one's a senior in high school, one's a sophomore in college. So I know a little bit about working with students. Our goal at You Can Vote is to ensure that anyone who is eligible to vote is registered and educated about how to successfully cast their ballot. New voters understandably have so many questions. After all, they're new. And they have complex questions about their eligibility, and many new voters have just very many misconceptions about voting in general. It's your, we all have kids. They need a little help. So You Can Vote was designed to educate voters using simple, evidence-based methods to help people become civically engaged. We help voters register or update their registration in compliance with all NC Board of Elections laws, and we work with the County Board of Elections to make sure that we're in compliance. And we empower and mobilize our community members to become lifelong voters. So, how can we help our students become lifelong voters when the best single predictor of voting is past voting behavior? I said it again, the best single predictor of voting is already having voted. Well, we kind of figured that out. School partnerships are critical in these first ages of eligibility for young students. High schools have the unique ability to support eligible students in casting that first and most important vote. And if done successfully, this ignites good civic habits for life, which we're trying to do. We're trying to make North Carolina number one in voting. So it's harder than ever for busy educators to keep up with the changing election information. So it's harder than ever for busy educators to keep up with the changing election information. That's why we call You Can Vote the easy button for civic engagement. And you see one of our materials, the fridge card, that date has changed twice recently, but now it's accurate. So we try to keep up quickly with changing laws and dates. And we've heard from a lot of institutions that we now partner with that they've been burned by previous partners who said they were nonpartisan, but didn't follow through on their nonpartisanship when they were allowed into the building. And so we take that seriously. Our belief in nonpartisanship underlies absolutely everything we do. We don't advocate for causes, we don't advocate for issues, we don't advocate for candidates, we don't allow for talk about parties or candidates at all. This allows us to partner with everybody, to help all voters, and make sure that everyone has the most up-to-date verified information to make their vote count and has access to local voting information. There's a lot of national stuff and they can't keep up with the local elections in North Carolina. And due to the sensitive nature of our work and the political polarized environment, we are so careful to train, mentor, vet our volunteers annually before allowing them even to work with us with voters. We have a growing list of public schools that we serve, from New Hanover, for Scythe, Johnston, Chatham, Durham, Orange, Mecklenburg, and Guilford Counties, just to name a few. Now, I'd like to show you a little bit about our 20-minute classroom presentation on what we do to help students become voters. So ideally, we, you know, one-on-one conversations and small group presentations are the best way to educate anyone. So we have, we do lobby days, we do cafeteria days. But the best way to do it is through a pretty simple 15-minute to 20-minute group presentation, small group presentation to classes. So we have a presenter who will be in our You Can Vote orange shirts. And we, this is the agenda. We want them to know, why does every election matter? What elections are coming up in North Carolina? How to find your sample ballot? How to keep your voter registration up to date? And then action steps if they choose to want to help their communities. We don't talk about candidates on the ballot at all, we talk about offices. And I want to thank you for being elected officials and working for, on behalf of the public and the students. We need you and they need to understand that we get to elect you. So we talk about, you know, what do you care about? Because a lot of students and young people, you know, they kind of feel like, well, maybe my vote doesn't matter. So we really try to show like how the issues intersect with the elected offices that we elect so they can form those voting habits for life. And then we do some compare turnouts, like we have a 2016 example of the election being decided by 10,000 votes out of 5 million. And then in this one, you know, local elections are decided by five votes or less. And here's another example of 5.3 million votes cast and 412 votes decided the election, or point 0007% of the people that showed up to vote. So it's really close and we just want students to know that your voice does matter. We want you to participate, we want you to be involved for life. You are eligible when you're 18, as long as you're a citizen and not on a felony conviction or probation or parole. And so the fridge cart that you have is our basic information. We update it often because things change often. We educate students that if they'll be 17, if they're 18 by November 8th, they can vote in this year's primary election. And we want students to know that they can participate in primary elections. And on the back, we just have the simple eligibility. There's a QR code where they can look up and see if they're registered. Call it a fridge cart because you can take it home. And when it's time to vote, you can look yourself up and make sure you go to the right place. We talk to the students about three ways to vote, early election day or by mail. There's different rules for each, so we recommend early voting for students. And then we talk about what happens when you move, you're going away to college, you might come back home. You know, what do you do then? Students have so many questions and they probably haven't even thought about this. So we try to just start that conversation with them. And then we just simply go into eligibility. And again, hit home that 17-year-olds who will be 18 on election day are eligible to vote in primaries in North Carolina. And then, you know, that's it, we're almost done, now it's time to fill out your registration form. So we pass out forms to all the students. And if, we walk them through. And so we pass them to all students because we know that students who might not be eligible don't want to raise their hand and say, I don't want one. We don't collect forms from students who aren't eligible, we tell them to keep them. We're not going to turn these in for you, we do not want anybody accidentally registering themselves that's not yet eligible. So, but all 16-year-old and above citizens who aren't serving a felony, they can absolutely get registered to vote. And then we just go step by step through the registration form. It's a confusing form when you first glance at it. So we want students to make sure that it is done correctly so that the Board of Elections can actually register them because the Board of Elections has to process these forms. We do always, I had a thought that I forgot to say. So we walk them through the form, talk about mailing addresses versus residential addresses. Tell them if they're pre-registering, they're going to have to wait to get their registration card until they do turn 18, that's when the Board of Elections will mail it out to them. We talk about, you know, this is your choice, you can provide your demographic information or not. You can choose a political party or not. We don't talk about political parties and it's absolutely the voter's choice. Lots and lots of young people are not checking any box on there. An overwhelming amount of young people are checking unaffiliated or not picking a box. And that's okay, that's their choice. And we talk about the only differences in primary elections, then you have to choose if you want to vote one of the party ballots. And the phone number for the Board of Elections to call if there's a problem with the form. We talk about the email address is new to the form. And about poll work, you can sign up to be a poll worker for your local Board of Elections. I know they're always trying to recruit young people to get civically engaged. And we're here to get them excited to do just that. And then we make sure everything is right, again, that no, you know, boxes are left unticked. And we make sure that an announcement always goes out before we ever visit a school to the parents saying, your child will have an opportunity to get registered and learn about voting. If they wish to participate, the last word of the social is helpful for the form. And students don't really know the last word of their social typically, or their driver's license number, but it's optional because we feel like parents really need to know. And some parents don't want their students to get registered or want them to get registered themselves when they, you know, go vote early together or something like that. So we register the students and then we talk about what happens next, looking up your sample ballot, sharing simple nonpartisan voter guides, the mechanics of voting guides, we don't do anything with candidates. And then just talk about, you know, keeping your registration up to date when you move. And then we do have student leadership development opportunities. We have a vast group of young people that are really excited and excited to learn that other students want to get involved civically. A lot of students that come and volunteer with us think that like there's no one else like them that wants to, wants to do this and wants to do this in a nonpartisan way. And I think a lot of students are looking for things that they can plug in that are not controversial. And hopefully, you know, helping your neighbors vote and helping our fellow students vote shouldn't be controversial because it is their right and they're Americans. And we want them to participate so we can have strong, healthy communities. So with that, I'm going to give it back to Mia, who can talk about next steps. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us. We have packet about the different types of services that we offer for high schools. You know, through, you know, we have formal partnerships, informal partnerships. We partner with over 500 diverse organizations and institutions across the state. And we're really proud to be able to nimbly keep up with a changing landscape to make sure that nobody gets turned away on election day.
So as I mentioned earlier, I'm the Regional Director for You Can Vote in Lower East. And I'm here to coordinate our next steps. We'd love, we would love for a main point of contact at each school, whether that's a social studies teacher or a principal. We can work directly with them to find the best time to speak to and register the juniors and seniors. This dynamic has proven to be successful in the past and we hope to continue this program here. And we have so many opportunities for young students who want to become civically engaged. We've got paid opportunities, volunteer opportunities, service hour opportunities. And I'd be working with them directly. I'm really flexible, they can work with me on the weekends, after school. We'll have a summer internship program coming up. And I just want to be the ultimate resource for you guys. So thank you again for having us. And if you have any questions, Dr. Oates has my email to forward it to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the presentation list, I believe they're unable to attend tonight, the North Brunswick High School National Honor Society, is that correct? Okay. And moving on to the teacher's voice, Ms. Betsy O'Hara, who is our Brunswick County Schools Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Before I begin, I just want to give a shout out to Town Creek Middle School. They are hosting our middle school basketball tournament this year. So I want to give a shout out to Dr. DeBarry and Ms. Mary Lucas, who is the AD there. If I look a little disheveled, it's because I just got done coaching half of our girls' middle school team. I'm the coach at Cedar Grove Middle, we made it to the second round. I had to leave at halftime so I could get here. And I just got a text from my principal that we won by two.
Congratulations.
But thank you, so we are headed to the championship on Thursday.
I'm a little upset you came to this meeting instead of finishing that game.
I know, but I talked to my principal about it, we waited, you know. Each role is important, but you know, since I truly am the teacher voice for our county, I felt this was the priority before that. And I have an awesome assistant coach, so she stepped up for me. And Mr. Hayes said he could be a backup as well. And he has like eight years of coaching experience, he told me, so they were in great hands. Yeah, but Town Creek did a great job, their hospitality, the facility is beautiful. So thank you to Town Creek for hosting it. So what I want to speak to you guys about tonight is we had a special guest in our county last Thursday. It was the North Carolina State Teacher of the Year, Ms. Eugenia Floyd. She is a fourth grade teacher in Chapel Hill. She'll actually be taking this year off, maybe two years off, to do her role as the Teacher of the Year, the State Teacher of the Year. And so what she's doing is she's going to different counties throughout the state just to see the awesome things that teachers and students are doing. So what I'm going to do is share some of the teachers that she went and saw and what they were doing in their classes. And then I have a video that I'd like to share with you of her visit here. Her first stop with Ms. Jenny Bryan, who is the Regional Teacher of the Year and also a teacher at South Brunswick High School, was South Brunswick High School. And in the video, you'll see them meeting with band director, Mr. Palmer's second period. And there they're able to hear the newly established jazz band perform one of their numbers. And you'll actually be able to hear them in the video, which is amazing. Also, they stopped to see the OCS teacher, Ms. Babson, and her students. They showed off their school-based enterprise, the Gourd Factory, and explained the variety of ways students work both inside and outside of the school to achieve the work hours required for their diplomas. Then they stopped at the World History teacher, Mrs. Hunter. Together with her student teacher, excuse me, student teaching intern, they were doing an engaging activity with their small group about conflicts that occur when cultures clash. Ms. Brown's World History students were quick to explain to Ms. Floyd that they thought Ms. Brown deserved to be the next North Carolina Teacher of the Year. So I'm hoping that they're willing that into fruition, that'd be awesome. Then from there, they went to Cedar Grove Middle School. And I was able to tour her around our school. And so the first stop we had was with Ms. Patricia Gilland, a sixth grade ELA teacher. And this is what she shared. I was visited by Ms. Floyd during my second core ELA class. She was excited to hear about the novel we are reading aloud and even shared some new titles for future reads. We are delighted to share a notice in note classroom graphics with her and our brand new Lexia leaderboard for sixth grade. She was impressed with how it was inspiring students who normally weren't super jazzed about Lexia, to step up and make Lexia gains. After that, we stopped to see our media specialist, Ms. April Rodgerson. And this is what she shared. Ms. Floyd stopped by the media center and we discussed the current Black History Reading Challenge. I explained how the quarterly challenges work and how students who complete are celebrated. And I'd also like to add that it's not just for students, for teachers. In this quarter, you have to read four books. And there's a certain criteria, and I'm doing it, I've already read three of the four books. So it's for teachers as well. We also discussed other media center events like Blind Date with a Book and the Book Bistro. Ms. Floyd shared some ideas for author visits in person and virtual and shared suggestions for novels that she has read with her students. And then we stopped to see the Math Interventionist, Ms. Carolyn Griffin. Ms. Floyd was able to see the two online programs, iXL and Math 180 that are being used as interventions with our students. Mrs. Griffin shared how the students set goals for themselves, track their data, and are celebrated when they meet their goals. Ms. Floyd was really interested in the Math 180 program and the conceptual learning that it was teaching our students. Also at Cedar Grove, she stopped to see, we actually had one of our seventh grade, or our seventh grade ELA teachers were in their PLC meeting, so she's able to stop in and see that. So the seventh grade ELA teachers, Ms. Jenna Griffith and Ms. Lindsay Robinson, were in a PLC with literacy coach Sarah Makish when Ms. Floyd stopped by. They showed Ms. Floyd an upcoming lesson called What's in the Bag, which gives students an engaging and rigorous way to analyze symbolism and theme. They went on to discuss how Ms. Griffith and Ms. Robinson provided opportunities for students of all capabilities to participate in creative projects like What's in the Bag through scaffolding and extension activities. Ms. Floyd was excited to share a similar approach she's used in the classroom for differentiating instruction. And then from there, she stopped at Virginia Williamson. And there she saw Ms. Harden, who is our elementary school teacher of the year. And Ms. Harden's students were engaged in a math game called Beat the Board, where they were getting practice adding two-digit numbers. And then from there, they went to the coast and they visited Ms. Floyd, who is our Brunswick County School Beginning Teacher of the Year. I'm sorry, not Ms. Floyd, let me rephrase that. Ms. Floyd stopped to see our Beginning Teacher of the Year, who was Mrs. Denise Marie Copeland. And Ms. Copeland will be completing, competing later this month at NCAT to be named the North Carolina Beginning Teacher of the Year. And so with that, I'd like to share a video with you of her visit. And then you can also see the jazz band as well. So lastly, I just wanted to share that she really thought it was amazing that open communication and dialogue that we really do have with our board and our cabinet. And so me personally, I would just like to thank you guys for that. I feel like you guys are very approachable, I can come to you. I feel like teachers can come to you, the community can come to you, and I thank you guys for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, you have in front of you the minutes from our January 4th regular meeting, January 12th emergency call meeting, January 12th work session, the January 18th budget work session, the January 18th committee meetings. And that would be it. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes as written? Motion by Mr. Robinson. Second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a recorded vote from Mr. Benton? Mr. Benton?
I'm here.
Mr. Benton, did you have a vote for the minutes?
I agree.
Alright, so that'll be a yes vote. Alright, next up, the consent agenda. Do you have any colleagues have anything they want to pull from consent? Hearing nothing, do I hear a motion to approve consent as written?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lemon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, next up with the action agenda, and the first thing is the appointment of the candidate to the Brunswick County Board of Trustees, this is the school board appointment, vacated by Mr. Thorson.
I'll second that.
I believe Mr. Benton made a motion, he wanted to table it to the committee meeting, a second by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Alright, is a motion on the table to, yeah, a motion on the table to table this to the committee meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Next up, we have the Town Creek Elementary enrollment and campus options that we've been working diligently on, Ms. Sue.
Thank you, Mr. Barger. As you know, we're overcrowded at Town Creek. At the January 18th Operations Committee, we reviewed three options prepared by staff to address the overcrowding. Those options were install three new modular classrooms, the second was to relocate and install two old modular units from Union to Town Creek, the third option, move the 5th grade from Town Creek Elementary to Town Creek Middle, and change the school classification to a 5'8" school. Brunswick County Schools staff used a survey to request input regarding those options, and received input. 67% of survey respondents selected the best option to be moving the 5th grade to Town Creek Middle, changing the classification of the school to a 5'8" school. The school administration from Operations, Curriculum, Ms. Costin, the principal at Town Creek Elementary, and Dr. DeBarry, the principal at Town Creek Middle, discussed and worked through issues such as bell schedules, lunch periods, physical separation needs, and traffic management. The areas of concern have been addressed and planned for, and both principals feel the change will work for students, staff, and parents. Because of that, staff recommends changing Town Creek Middle School to a 5'8" school, with the start times for both schools to be at or close to the start time for middle school students, and that the change become effective at the start of the 2022-23 school year.
Okay. Ms. Rutledge, we received an email saying that perhaps we would have car congestion and so forth and so on, there with the same start and end time. Do you have any input about that?
I do. We looked at, every time you build a school, you have to have your traffic, your circulation plan reviewed by DPI. And the stacking lanes at both those schools will hold the number of cars that the schools are designed to serve. Both of the schools are designed to stack in the stacking lanes, side by side, two side by side, and that happens better at the elementary school than it does at the middle school. The middle school's got so much room right now, people don't have to do it, so they don't. And to be on the safe side, we can add another little strip at the elementary school to get a few more cars in a stacking lane, and stack it two by two, and that will work.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Rutledge, what kind of financial impact did we have between the three strategies that's being presented here?
Putting in three new modulators is estimated to be $483,000. Moving two old ones, and buying, let's see, and purchase one new one and move three old ones is $393,000. And then, the, we did not, I didn't estimate yet, the cost of adding the extra strip of stacking lane at the elementary school. It won't be close to either one of those.
Dr. Oates, staffing impact perspective?
With the staffing impact, we would outfit the middle school, well, what is currently the middle school, pretty much as an intermediate school, since it will be a 5'8". We would supply the staff needed to accommodate the extra students and their curriculum needs, such as electives or the specials that they would have in elementary school. So that would actually, it would benefit the existing staff at Town Creek Middle by giving them additional, it would give them a secretary, it would give them the number of teachers needed as well. So adding those students to the student body would increase the staffing, the numbers of staff over there.
I'm trying to just field a few more questions that we received additionally, as we've continued this process. Are we prepared to address any psychological impacts, or the mixing of the grade levels that we've had addressed to us?
There are, there would be physical separation between, of course, what would traditionally be our 5th grade students and the traditional middle school students. So we have the, the way the building is outlined at middle, at Town Creek Middle, we could very easily do that. Any of the other issues that have been brought to our attention can easily be remedied.
Dr. Oates, would this create any staffing shortages at the elementary?
It should, it would not.
Because the ADM would allow the middle school to have more
That's correct.
Staff. So some of those obviously are going to move from the elementary, but we're not going to be understaffing the elementary then?
Sure.
I just wanted to add, I just have a hard time considering the financial impact of these mobile units, considering their lifespan and the issues we've apparently had with these over the years. Continual problems, is that safe to continually, to continue to assume? We've had problems in the past with mobile?
They have a shelf life.
Okay.
So eventually, there would be problems with them.
And obviously, I think me and Mr. Barger discussed this, any money saved, recognized during this process, if we were to spend it toward mobile units, obviously could be put to better use later for other strategies.
That's correct.
Whether we end up having to look for, you know, the long-term solution being another school, or, you know, more solutions at the middle school, better use of funds there.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Ms. Rutledge, the mobile units you're talking about buying, are those very much the same as what they have at Town Creek now?
Correct.
I went to visit Town Creek last week, and the students in those mobile units are, is a special service class of six or eight students. And it was large enough for that, but it seemed to be very small to me for a regular middle school classroom. Like a lot, it would be a lot of congestion.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you put two together, or you buy a larger unit, it just increases the cost. And they are tight, which, when they were full at Belleville Elementary, the, I mean, parents were unhappy that their, that their children were in there, and so was the staff.
You know, I think
Just doesn't seem to be as big a problem in high school with parents, but it, I mean, you know, I'm in, I'm in the customer service business, I'm sensitive to what parents say, and I heard it a lot at Belleville, and I could understand.
I think in collaboration with the county commissioners, the goal, the end goal here is to figure out if we're putting an addition on Town Creek, or if we're building another school, and we've been working with the commissioners on identifying funding mechanisms, and also what exactly that building looks like, whether an addition or another school or whatever. So this is not the only action tonight. This is just to alleviate the overcrowding and the complaints that we have now about the overcrowding.
Get us started.
I think also at committee meetings, it's important to also mention that Lieutenant Stanley, who's over our SROs, also addressed the safety concerns with those mobile units. They don't have the safety mechanisms in place that our brick-and-mortar school buildings have, and I think student safety is vital to a healthy educational environment as well. And Ms. Robinson and Ms. Moffett, I know both of you said you attended intermediate schools yourselves.
We did.
If you want to speak to those experiences potentially.
Yeah, you know, I think it worked out very good at the time. You know, when I attended Charlotte Middle School, we were a 4th through 8th middle school, and I think it worked out well. Me and Ms. Moffett both spoke to our experience with that, and I didn't see any negative implications at that time.
Yeah, I was the first 5th grade class that moved over to our middle school because of crowding, and I had a good experience. And I think there's been measures taken to keep them separate, to provide age-appropriate materials, and to speak to your, you know, about the modulators. Being a former elementary education teacher, that's not optimal for the learning environment of a small, you know, of an elementary classroom. They need to be moving carpet time, you know, calendar time, there's a lot of action going on in an elementary school classroom, and that's just not optimal for the kids. And I do worry about the safety, is what you brought up from Lieutenant Stanley, which we talked with him at length about. So.
And I can say in a mobile unit, when I was at West, we had mobile units, and I'm going to be just, be just honest, you know, many students were just up to no good for them in a mobile unit. It leaves the opportunity for problems, and I can't see that that's going to change any now. I personally would like to avoid mobile units as a solution to our problems, if at all possible, and spending that kind of money in a mobile product that has a very poor shelf life, that creates more problems than it does good. You know, I just can't see spending taxpayer money in that manner. Dr. Oates, you probably can speak to this best, and I know I can a little bit as well, having lived here all my life. We've been quite successful with the Waukamau model?
Yes, we have. From a continuity aspect, from a, from having the kids from kindergarten all the way through 8th grade, has been a good experience for them, from what I hear from parents, and definitely from students. And doing that in a, from a 5th grade intermediate model, I don't see any problem with that, you know, having that in any type of negative impact on their academics. And actually, the social aspect of it as well. You're already getting immersed into just a little bit of the middle school life, as opposed to having that big transition, as we all know, comes from leaving your building in the 5th grade and then going to a totally new environment in the sixth. So as the K8 school at Waukamau has that smooth transition, we will be beginning this on a smaller scale with Town Creek.
Alright, if nobody has anything else, I hear a motion for any of the three options.
I'll make a motion that we accept the 5'8" configuration.
Motion by Mr. Lemon to accept the 5'8" recommendation. Mr. Benton, go ahead.
I was going to second the motion.
Alright, second by Mr. Benton for moving the 5th grade to the current Town Creek Middle School and turning it into the Town Creek Intermediate School. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And just to note, that'll begin on the 2022-23 school year.
So August.
That's correct.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, next up, we have Senate Bill 654.
As you begin to take your vote for your monthly masking option, I just wanted to give you some information after talking with Brunswick County Health Services as to where we are, to assist you in making your decision. According to Brunswick County Health Services, as of today, the percent positive was 39.9%. As you can, you will probably see on our district dashboard, we have 74 estimated active cases and 105 estimated quarantines. In talking with the Health Services team, as you know, we, they forecasted basically a surge, which we saw end of December throughout January. As of right now, the cases, according to them, in the county, was between 200 and 300 cases, I think a week is what we got. However, that has stayed steady for the last week or two. So from the Health Services side, it seems to be that the surge has, we've peaked at the surge, and if you can imagine it as a bell curve, right now we're sitting at the top of the bell curve, and the next step is to come down the bell curve. So things are getting better than they were. If you're looking at it from the, from the school side, if you just think about the number of staff and students that we had out with quarantine, the numbers that I just had just, have just given you are a little less than what they were before. We're still having some staffing issues, but we are coping with that. It's not as bad as they were two or three weeks ago, so we are still working through But with that, with, after talking with the Health Services Department, we are making some gains.
Mr. Barger, I'd like to make a motion if possible.
Okay, Mr. Robinson, go ahead.
In discussion with Dr. Oates, and recognizing the impact that we're continuing to have with regard to masking, or handle unmasking with our staff, and the negative implications created with the toolkit. To say it's a bit chaotic is an understatement, and at any rate, we're, we seem to be downsiding on this again. And I hope this is it, and I'm prayerfully hopeful that this will be the last discussion that we'll be dealing with regarding mask. And I would like to make a motion to return to mask optional effective February the 14th, which is two weeks from now.
I'll second that motion.
I would like to further the discussion before we move forward.
Hold on a second, so we have a motion and a second, enough discussion, go ahead.
Okay. This is the kind of stuff that keeps me up at night, and I know this is polarizing, and everybody has a different opinion, but I just want to read what I wrote about 3:00 a.m. last night. So I have read and understand the toolkit. In fact, I've read it several times. The ironic point I want to make about this toolkit is that in following the guidelines laid out in the toolkit, those in power in Raleigh often refer to CDC guidelines as a means to back up the reasons for keeping this toolkit in place. We've closely followed changes in the number of days we quarantine. It was 14, then 10, and now 5. But now that the CDC has repeatedly and finally admitted something that many have known all along, cloth masks and paper masks do not, and I repeat, do not work, this fact falls on deaf ears. Furthermore, many changes have occurred with this virus, yet the toolkit pretty much says the same thing as what it said back in July. There have been minimal changes coming out of Raleigh. Although the goalposts have been moved several times, those in power and the authors of this toolkit have done little to make significant changes to it, and it has school boards across the state shackled to ridiculous requirements. In mid-January, Governor Cooper vetoed House Bill 264, the Emergency Powers Accountability Act, which would have reintroduced a system of checks and balances that our country was founded upon. He voted to keep his own power. I can go to Walmart, the grocery store, a college basketball game where fans wildly cheer, a packed three-hour concert, or I can sit shoulder to shoulder during an hour-long church service and not wear a mask. Yet our precious Yet our precious children are forced to wear a mask while in school. Have you noticed that NBA games, hockey games, and celebrity award ceremonies are packed with people not wearing masks? If you think about it, the only places we are required to wear a mask are hospitals and medical facilities and schools. If I go to a hospital or a medical facility, I am there for treatment, or I am sick and/or I'm visiting someone who is sick. Schools are not places of sickness. We do not treat medical conditions at school. Schools are places where children should be actively engaging with one another and finding joy in learning. I walked the halls of some schools last week with Dr. Oats and Mr. Lemon. The buildings are eerily quiet. The kids are masked up, masked up and separated as much as possible. Plexiglass is everywhere. If the general public had access to the hallowed hallways and classrooms that these students sit in, many would understand the devastating effects this is having on our children. Children who have almost no risk from dying from COVID have suffered the most, have sacrificed the most, and have lost the most. There has been a complete lack of consideration over the welfare of our children. The children should be first, always. Masks should be optional for all kids. Again, I want to reinforce that I know what the toolkit says, and I know the consequences of not wearing a mask, yet I will not stand in the way of a parent's right to make medical decisions for his or her child. I cannot reason why this has to continue, and I can't reason why we are allowing further damage to the mental health of our children. So this is our daily reminder that COVID-19 isn't going away, but our freedoms are if we continue to comply with these ridiculous mandates.
Board members, we have a motion on the table, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor of Mr. Robinson's motion to make masks optional, two weeks, about two weeks from today, will be February fourteenth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Benton was a nay. Ms. Moffett, did you vote?
I oppose, because I think they should be optional.
Ms. Moffett opposes, three to two. It'll be optional on February fourteenth. And next up, we have a discussion by the superintendent.
Yes, sir, very quickly, two things I just wanted to, three things I actually want to bring up. It's just notifications. There's going to be a spotlight on Talent Showcase, which will basically be our district talent show. It'll be held at Odell Williamson on Friday, February ninth, February ninth at 7:00 p.m. It's free to the public, featuring various acts from all of our traditional high school students. So there's some talented kids out there if you want to come in and enjoy what they have to offer. I also like to extend a special thank you to Mr. Siemens. If you have paid attention to our Facebook page, you may have noticed that there's now a dedicated and appreciated thank you notes on our Facebook page, where community members, parents, anyone in Brunswick County are recognizing staff members for the things that they do on a day-to-day basis, actually writing notes of appreciation to, to the staff members so they can see it and feel appreciated. As we, as Ms. Moffett did say, we've walked halls and talked to teachers, and we've let them know how much we appreciate them, but when the public sends in notes of thanks, specific notes of thanks, actually saying what they are thankful for that these employees have done, it definitely gives a different feel to them. So take a moment, if you would, and just peruse the BCS Facebook page, and you'll be able to read some of the wonderful things that have been said about our staff members since this has been done. So I wanted to thank him for just bringing, making that happen. It's been a wonderful thing to, to read. And lastly, as I mentioned when we were just a few months ago discussing masking, we're still having issues finding substitutes. So if anyone who is listening to our, this live stream or are in the building tonight and you are willing and able to give of yourself however your schedule allows, if it's one day a month, if it's one day a week, if you can do five days, we are willing and ready for you to come in and serve as substitute teachers and get into these classrooms and help us be part of the solution and part of the team. All you have to do is sign up on the, on the website, on our website. If you feel led to do that tonight, see Mr. Steve Foster, our Human Resources Director, and he will definitely give you the information on how to do that. So those are the announcements that I have for this evening.
Hey, your announcements?
Under, are we under board members as well, Mr. Barger?
Yeah.
A couple of quick things. I just want to note, I made a visit on January nineteenth over to Ms. Gerald's Senior Health Science Class. They designed an ER. Very good group of students there enjoyed seeing that, a very talented group of seniors in that health science class. I just wanted to make mention that I was able to go and join them for that presentation. Also, I could be wrong, but I believe I heard in the presentations or the public speaking section about the mandatory vaccines for students. And last Friday, Ms. Moffett had made some of us aware that there was discussion in Raleigh about a proposal for mandatory COVID-19 vaccines for students. I made some contacts up in Raleigh. Of course, nobody answered. It's generally been my luck up there calling folks. So I also asked Dr. Oats to make some contacts for me as well. I also spoke with Representative Miller. Anyway, long story short, the information, and Dr. Oats can interject and correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that a petition was created in Raleigh, apparently by the UNC system, okay? And all petitions have to be heard by the Health Commission Board, which is under the umbrella of Department of Health and Human Services. And that petition will be heard tomorrow, February the second, and that's where that originated from. They believe it will affect seventeen to eighteen. We don't know that for sure, but that is the origin of that information, okay? It is not from any Board of Education, it's not from this board. That is where it originated from, and any decision, it's not anticipated that that would get approved. I've seen stranger things happen, but it would still end up having to be a legislative act at any rate, so.
Which isn't gonna happen.
Right. Right, don't see that happening. Again, I believe it's safe to assume, you know, those of us here on this board, I feel that that is a decision, an individual decision. And again, I heard it mentioned tonight, and I wanted to clarify that, that it's not an act of this board. We actually learned of it on Friday, as we typically learn a lot of things on Friday from the state around 4:45. And- Ms. Moffett, was it about 3:30, 4 o'clock?
Yes, and the reason they, it came out of the UNC system, I called Representative Miller myself, and we just talked about they're targeting the seventeen and eighteen-year-olds because that way they're already vaccinated when they get to college, or a community college, or going into the workplace. So, and like you said, it has to be, all petitions have to be heard. We're hearing that they're not going to approve it, they've been advised not to approve it. I'm adamantly opposed to it. I will charge the gates of hell with a water pistol, because I do not agree with that at all. I mean, that should be a parent's decision, a personal decision. But it, you know, if it did have to go to the legislative body, it would be eighteen to twenty-four months before it would even be heard. So, but still, we have to, there's lots of little kids way down there in first and second grade we have to protect, you know?
And I think, you know, Friday afternoon, when we learned of it, as much as we try to stay on top of things as board members, you know, sometimes, a lot of times, you know, when you learn of things coming out of Raleigh, it is in the afternoon on a Friday. And, you know, you try to make phone calls, at least I thought I was making a phone call to the individual responsible, or could be responsible for a lot of this, and when I called her cell phone, it went directly to a voicemail that said, if you're calling about the February second meeting, go to our website, which didn't give me a lot of information. And Representative Miller had a lot of digging to do as well, but I think we wound up getting ahead of it by about 6:00. And again, I wanted to disclose that information because it was very hard to get to the bottom of it by Friday evening, and I think by Monday morning, Dr. Oats had gotten a good answer from the State School Board Association in writing, and I think I pretty much stated the exact-
That's, that's correct. However, the first, the first response we got back from the North Carolina School Board Association was, we'll get back to you.
Right.
With that said, I have a motion to go to closed session to discuss personnel. Motion by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. When I call the meeting back to order, do I have an appointment, appointment, do I have a motion to approve the personnel list as written?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion during the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.